...visitors and delegations, is there anyone who'd like to address the Board of Education?
I will.
Sorry, excuse me.
You first.
My name is Kate Achen, I just wrote down a couple of questions that I have. It's regarding basically discipline within the school at the elementary level. Is there, I should know these things but I honestly do not. Is there a zero tolerance policy in place as far as fighting? So like an actual written rule?
Fighting.
Fighting with students?
I probably won't be able to, we probably won't be able to answer your question right now.
Oh, okay.
If you just get clarity on the question.
It's called zero tolerance policy, I know other schools have that. Basically whether you're defending yourself or something, if the child lashes out at another child and punches him, the other kid punches back, it's because zero tolerance, both kids are, regardless if you're defending yourself or not, both kids are usually suspended, whether it's school suspension or not, and I just wondered if New Hartford actually has that policy or not.
I'm...
Yeah. Each elementary building does follow a code of conduct, and I know that through that code of conduct, it's progressive discipline, so it would be on a case-by-case basis so that if students are not following the rules and procedures in the school, that there is discipline action that's administered obviously to all students involved.
Okay, so it's not like cut and dry, zero at the top, zero tolerance?
I don't believe zero tolerance verbiage is in our policy, but it is a code of conduct policy that is followed by all of the elementary principals.
Okay.
Mr. President, thank you for your time. Go.
Yeah, just, ma'am, if you're interested, all the board poli-- and I'm not trying to defer the question, but all the board policies are online.
Okay.
If you go to NHCSD district, you go to departments, you go to Board of Education, and then it's got district policies. And you can search words, you can do whatever you want to come up with the policies.
Okay.
There's also an abbreviated version of the code of conduct because it is rather lengthy, there's an abbreviated version in the student handbook.
In the student handbook, okay.
That are sent home with all of our elementary students, and they are online.
And I assume there was probably something in there and I did not, I don't have it all. All right. My other question, when a child does, does have disciplinary actions, is it documented every time, or should it be documented every time with the principal? You know?
All behavioral infractions are documented.
Okay.
Each time.
Each time.
So that would allow for progressive discipline.
Okay. Perfect. And at what point, if a parent feels as though, how do I word this? The principal has maybe exhausted all of her or his avenue, like every avenue that they could possibly take, and issues are still coming about, what is a parent, where does a parent turn?
Well, I think certainly you meet with the classroom teacher, the building principal, then you would contact my office, following the chain of command, that would be my office as Assistant Superintendent.
Okay.
And following my office would be our Superintendent, Mr. Mill.
Okay.
And the Board of Education.
And the Board of Education, so, you know, I'm, hi. Just connect us though.
What's your office number?
624-1274.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Ma'am, could you please spell your last name for that?
Yes, it's, last name is Achen, A-C-H-E-N.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Feel better?
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes, Jessica.
Hi, my name is Jessica McMaire, M-C-N-A-I-R, 79 Sanger Avenue. Speaking tonight as a parent, and first of all, I wanted to thank you all for being here, I appreciate your service. Also wanted to highlight some really great things that have been happening in our school. This morning I got to go to a first grade performance. I did try to file a topic meeting but I didn't include you, you know, Mr. Head, I'm sorry. But I did let the principal and teachers know, I appreciate your focus on arts and education, and I really appreciate the time everyone devoted to those things. As a parent, I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts with you, just some food for thought. One thing is that as a parent, today was a great example of how to build community in our schools. It was great to see so many parents in the auditorium, even during the workday. I hope that the school continues to allow opportunities for parents to come in. Curriculum might, of course, but I very much want to see the open house tradition continue, and I know we have to be concerned with safety, but any opportunities that we can bring parents into our schools, I know that as a parent, I really, really appreciate and value that. It helps me feel like I'm more connected with my child's learning, to be able to see him in the school setting and interacting with his peers. I get great communication from the school and from the teachers, and I just wanted you to know how thankful I am that our district continues to encourage that. Thank you. One other thing is, again, just some food for thought. I do remain concerned that it seems like so much of our focus is driven by a calendar and a schedule that's dictated not by what the kids in the classroom need, but based on what someone at the state education department is telling us we have to do. It's frustrating year after, well, this year it's been first experience in a testing grade in third grade, but the pace at which content was delivered to my son this year seemed very quick, very fast, and it appeared that it was done so that students could have material presented to them prior to the state test. I understand it's the district's responsibility to make sure that all of the content is covered so that students are prepared if they choose to take that test, but I believe that a significant number of parents have decided not to participate in those tests, and as a parent, I would like to encourage the district to think about if we're really meeting kids' needs or not anymore, if so many in our community are taking action to express concern with what's going on. There's a lot of instructional time lost, and there's a lot of instructional time lost along the way if we're moving at a pace that's too quick, as dictated maybe by a testing sample. So I would just urge you to maybe keep that in mind as you go forward, and I don't know if I'm allowed to take off parent hat for a second and just say that I know that there's at least one teacher in the district who would be willing to slow down that pace and welcome kids to a classroom where instruction is really centered on what the kids need and can move at a pace where what the kids need, and use the entire school year instead of having to get it all done by April. So I'll let you infer who that one teacher might be, but that's something that I would welcome as a parent, and I would really love it if there were some other teachers, and I do, I don't speak for them, but I suspect that there are other teachers that would, you know, meet that need for my child, you know, from a mom's perspective. And so again, I just wanted to share some food for thought, I know my time is limited. Thank you so much, and I do appreciate the district's openness when it comes to hearing parents' voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McMaire. Anyone else?
Jamie McMaire, same spelling, same address. Do you need me to yield you any more time?
No. Yeah, it's all yours here.
I think if I could just, you know, maybe ducktail off of what Tess said, I think that the district is a credit to all the people who are volunteering the time for the board and the people who serve in leadership capacity, and certainly the people who are delivering instruction to our kids in the support staff. We have always been a leader in doing what's best for kids, and the opportunity is right there in front of you to continue to do that. But it can't be leadership by following what it is that state ed tells you you have to do, right? If you have a community where for a second year in a row, majority reject the narrative from state ed, it's incumbent upon people who are in positions of leadership to look at that and say, what are we doing? Why are we delivering a year's worth of instruction in eight months? You know, nobody who went to Teacher College learned, yeah, get it all done before the test. But that's pretty much what's driving what my kids receive here, and what's driving the job that our K8 teachers are required to do. And so the leadership opportunity is right there, and I know if you reach out to the community and ask the people who made that choice to say, I reject the narrative from state ed, ask them why they made that choice, they would say, yes, go in a different direction. Doesn't have to be this way, you know, it's what it is if, or to give you that feeling, it's what it is that we want for our kids. And I know we have everything that we need to be able to do that, we just need to learn. And so when you take that back, I really hope you consider, are we willing to step away from what it is that we're being pushed to do and towards something that is better for kids? And I do appreciate all of your time and service. Thanks.
Any question?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Technology presentation in public area, Smart School Bond Act, preliminary investment plan, CJ, what else?
Good evening, everyone. My presentation this evening is going to be a two-parter. The first part, I'd like to bring you up to speed on our information technology plan and update you on where we've gone this year and everything that we've accomplished. And then the second portion of my presentation is going to be on our Smart Bond Act and our Smart Bond Act Investment Plan. We'll get into detail in a bit, I'll see if I can get that. Our year one, we're just finishing year one of our new technology plan. We had to do a three-year technology plan submitted to the state. The state has changed the way we do technology plans. It used to be we were just able to create one, the board reviewed it, signed off on it, and we were good to go. Now what they've done is they've made it an online technology plan that we need to submit and then update annually. So Mr. Mill just sent me the letter, I believe it was yesterday, that said the portal is now open for me to update next year's technology plan. So in one sense, I'm really glad that they did it this way because technology changes so rapidly that this is almost a living document. For us to create a three-year technology plan and really adhere to it is very difficult because technology changes day by day. So it's a good thing that we have that ability. Our main focus is infrastructure, equipment, and training. So what we achieved this year was we put new desktop touchscreen computers in all K6 classrooms, and they've been wonderful. All the teachers absolutely love them, the kids were so excited, and they've been fantastic. We added computers to the counseling department. We put interactive whiteboards in the elementary reading rooms and in all the libraries. Special ed classrooms in the high school. We reconfigured our firewall and our email filtering system. It was getting a little behind the times, so we updated that, put in a new server, and reconfigured that whole thing. We have been getting slammed with spam emails and virus emails, and it's been doing a pretty good job. For a while there, it was a little tough, it was becoming like sandbags that we were fighting a battle, but we've gotten it down now, and I think it's doing a great job. We've been replacing older presentation projectors in the classrooms. Laptop computers for the biotech classroom, we put new PC computers in there. The English department, the computers that we took out of the biotech moved up to the English classroom. They're meeting their needs. They're a cart now that they can share among classrooms when they have to do reports or just type papers. We've been replacing printers throughout the district. We put wireless access points into the language department because we gave them Chromebook computers. So they wanted to go to an online curriculum, so they have Chromebook computers now, and we put wireless access points in there. We updated the VersiTrans transportation system software, and we also started Google classrooms throughout the district. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's a way for teachers to share curriculum and materials online with students. So we've provided a lot of training for teachers on Google classrooms. We had a new security sign-in for Spartan Apps. We upgraded our finance manager system. As I said, Chromebook computers to the language department. We put tablet computers in the computer science lab so that they can, the kids can actually write code for their tablet computers. Web smart, we upgraded our school lunch system, My School Bucks instead of My Lunch Money. We put in a new system backup and storage as well. And we are now preparing for a new student information system, school tools, moving off of Infinite Campus and moving into that, and that's moving along quite well. Our future plans are to upgrade our infrastructure, that's a big one. We have the servers, we have all the servers we need, we're doing good with that. We're looking at things like switches and cabling, and that will allow for a higher bandwidth and allow us to do our wireless infrastructure throughout the district, and that's our next big project, is ubiquitous wireless throughout the district. And then of course, always classroom technology. So our future innovations, looking at learning management systems, we have a group that's reviewing different learning management systems, and if we want to go down that road, or which package we'd like to use, because there's a number of different ones. Tablet and Chromebook computers for the classrooms, that way they can use online textbooks, that's a big one. Mobile device management, of course. Possibility of IP telephone systems, replacing our antiquated telephone system that we have here. Door lock security systems that will run through the network, and as I said, our backbone switch upgrades. So those are the big things that we're looking at right now and reviewing for the near future. So with that being said, are there any questions as far as the technology plans concerned, how we've moved forward?
What about that cabling system? Now how involved is that new cabling system?
Quite involved, quite involved. And that's where this comes in, and what I'm going to provide you with now is our Smart Schools Bond Act Investment Plan. This is the preliminary plan, what I'm getting you for review.
Everything you've covered is before the money for the bond.
Yes, yes, that's everything that we've done so far this past year. Now, the Smart Schools Bond Act, this came out in 2014, and it was monies that the, I'm This was monies that the state has provided to school districts throughout New York State. The purpose of it is to improve our technology within our classrooms and within our schools. The biggest one and number one, and this is also on the federal level, is for high-speed internet and broadband technology, meaning wireless high-speed internet technologies in classrooms. That's a biggie. Learning technologies, of course, in the classroom, modernized facilities, and then also high-tech security, they're allowing. Those are the only places that we can spend this money. So that's what we looked at, and our allocation is $1,167,221. And that seems like a big number until you really get down to the mini-grain and look at what it costs to do these types of things. So that's what's outlined in this investment plan, is exactly what we would like to purchase and exactly what we would like to do. This plan was put together by the TIC and TAC committees, reviewed and approved before I brought it to you. It needed to be vetted on the website for at least 30 days prior to this meeting so that you could review it, and the public could review it, and anybody could come in and ask questions on what we plan on doing and why we plan on doing it. So what do we need in our district, and why, how are we going to spend this money? Well, the big one is school connectivity. We don't have a wireless infrastructure here. We have a few access points, basically something that you could go to Best Buy and purchase and put up, which does not meet our needs in any way, shape, or form. If multiple people get onto one of these access points, it slows way down. So what we'd like to do is put in a fully ubiquitous wireless system that will handle classroom computers that are connected to a wireless access point. And then of course, classroom learning technology in accordance with the district's technology plan that we put together. Classroom computers, we're looking at buying Chromebook computers for the libraries that can be shared and used, and interactive whiteboards to finish off in our classrooms. Some of our classrooms still don't have them, we want to get them in there. So what we needed to do for the state was demonstrate need, and then prove that we had an adequate infrastructure. So that's what a big part of this is. As you read through this, every section asks, do you have the infrastructure to support what you're going to do? And on every section, you'll see that I say, I am going to be spending the money creating the infrastructure. Professional development, how are we going to train our teachers? Well, there's not a lot of training on using a wireless infrastructure, but there will be training on using things like the Chromebook, as we plan on purchasing Chromebooks and tablets. We will be having professional development on that, so the teachers are comfortable using that technology. And then of course, technical support, and we have a fantastic IT staff here. I believe we're the best in the area without a doubt. We have a great staff, so we do have the technical support behind it. And then sustainability. And the way we've looked at this is we've ensured that the purchases that we are making will be sustainable. I looked at licensing, that's one of the reasons that we went with Aruba as the wireless company versus Cisco. There's a difference in licensing there. So we decided, you know, that Aruba has been a proven technology and a proven company, and a number of the other districts in the area have been using it very successfully and really like it. It's been very cost-effective for them as well. Now the process, what we had to do was identify district needs, then we had to have stakeholder engagement, and that was where the TIC and TAC committees came in. We had people from the community who are on the TAC committee, they came in and reviewed this plan as well, and we discussed it. We did planning. Voter approval is not needed on this because this was already approved by voters in the past, when they voted on the Smart Schools Bond Act, it's already been approved. So voter approved is not required. Capital project approval and building permits, I was very pleasantly surprised when we submitted this to Facilities Management at New York State. We got the answer back in like a week. I was shocked. I expected it to be a few months before we heard back from them. But we were eligible for that streamline because of what we're doing, the wireless infrastructure. They saw the plans, they read what I wanted to do, boom, they just approved us and gave us our number. So we did great as far as that's concerned. Instructional technology plans, which we had already had in place and filed and approved by New York State, that's what I discussed earlier when I said that we have to update this annually. New York State approves it annually, so we had already had it approved, so we were good there. And then our plan submission, now this is the stage that we're at right now. Once the above steps are complete, the district will submit to you, the Board of Education, for approval our investment plan, which I've laid for you. And then once you take a look at this and approve it, I can submit it to New York State. It's an online submission form, that is the exact submission form that I will be filling out online. I printed it right off the website and filled it out from there. Then they'll review it. Now the review team, from what I understand, is a small group of people. We don't know when they will be reviewing them, how quickly they will be reviewing them, or when we'll get an answer back. But once we're approved, they'll be authorized, we will be authorized to spend the funds and purchase this equipment. And then expenditure and reimbursement of funds, once we've purchased other things, we just request that funds back from the state. What we'd like to accomplish, as I said, our school connectivity, our infrastructure, wireless networks, the cabling of buildings, and our total investment in that is $753,430. So just to put a wireless infrastructure throughout this district, that's the cost. As I said, it seems like a lot, but once you break it down, it's not that much. And then of course, smart boards, desktop computers, laptop computers, Chromebooks, presentation projectors, we'll give you $364,875 for classroom equipment. And this is following our technology plan, so rather than using other funds, we can use this to move forward with our technology plan, what we planned for already, previously planned for. So as I said, once you've reviewed this and approved it, then I can submit to the state. Are there any questions?
And this is probably a question for Barry. Barry, with regard to reimbursement, what's the timeframe for when we make the expenditure and when we are reimbursed? Is it a long timeframe? I mean, it's a tremendous amount of money that we're putting out.
Right, so once approved, once our plan is approved and we make our purchase, once we put the, we request for reimbursement, they're saying that it's a 90-day turnaround for reimbursement, so it isn't a, it isn't a following year reimbursement, similar to BOSI later transit, they're saying it's a 90-day turnaround. So timing is critical, and we've had many discussions of that.
The current year is very helpful.
Right.
And well, my thing is, is it, and is it like, so let's say CJ goes out and buys just the Chromebooks and they're $90,000, can we submit the $90,000, or do we have to spend the whole 1. whatever million and then you're reimbursed on that?
We can submit in pieces, as we got.
Amen.
And the timing is everything, sure, we've had a lot of discussions about timing with this, but what we're hearing though is that they really don't even have a team, a true team, put together to even review these until sometime this summer.
No way, the state? Come on. Are you sure?
Well, that's why it was such a quick turnaround.
It was the guy who came back at his lunch break, he's like, listen. And then I have another question that again might, so these are really questions that are about your presentation, we're probably going to be reviewing. We've been talking for some time, I think, about the idea of bring your own device and ubiquitous network, does that preclude that, or does that facilitate that? And will you work in conjunction with policy to make sure that we have a watertight policy?
There's the key, right there. I've talked to a few other districts that were looking into it. I know one district did put it in place, and I'd like to talk to them, they just put it in place, and I wanted to see how it's working with them. I've talked to some other people that said, yeah, we know schools that did it, it was a total disaster. So I want to be very, very careful with that, and like you said, it's going to be based on policy. How do we want to do this? What are we going to allow them to connect to, and what are we not going to allow them to connect? How do we allow them to connect? There's a number of different ways. They can either bring their device down to the IT department, we register their device and we say, here, now you can use our network. Or there's other equipment that can be purchased that will recognize the device, report back to us, and then we allow them certain levels that they can achieve with that device. It all depends, like I said, we're still really looking into that. It's a little scary for me, you know, to have, to say, okay, well, you can bring in your device, because they may not do anything malicious, but they may have something on their computer, remember a virus on their computer, suddenly they bring it in, they connect to our network. You know, we've got to have that stopgap there too, to say, okay, you know, when I was at the college level, we had software that would check every device, it wouldn't allow you on unless you had updated antivirus, unless all of your updates were on your computer, but that was a little bit different. I don't know if we can reach that level right away, it may take some time. So it's going to be a lot of research before we actually move into that. We may allow it at some level, and just say, okay, well, if you want to bring in your device, then you'd have to register it with the IT department. Or possibly, you're allowed on the network as a guest, so you can still get internet access, which will run through our filtering system, so the kids just can't go wherever they want. But at the same time, we can control, if you're out at YouTube, your level's way down here, you know, we don't want you taking down our bandwidth because you want to sit during study hall and watch YouTube video, or be downloading movies or whatever, yeah. But if you're in a classroom using your own device, we want to make sure that you have the ability to reach your curriculum and do whatever you're doing now. So yeah, it's a lot of research, it's a lot of research, and a lot of experimenting and talking to other districts on what they've achieved and how successful or not successful they were.
Well, I'm all for another district experimenting before we.
Exactly.
Well, research is best practice is, see how model policies involve our own policies.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because BOSI doesn't even have a policy yet, I've asked them a number of times, and any of the districts in the area have policies, and they don't, yeah. It's still murky waters.
So from my concern, so it is securing the wireless network. If we have ubiquitous wireless, but we don't have bring your own device, then it's much more secure because you control all the devices.
Exactly, exactly. Every one of our devices, district-owned, will be registered by us.
So the kids that bring their cell phone and they'll do, they can see they're connected.
They could get a guest, but they can't get on our net. Right, exactly. They could get out to the internet and that's it, and that would be filtered as well. And we, what's nice about the new system is we can set that level as a guest.
How do you filter if they're just going on Verizon?
Well, we cannot filter if they're using their own phone and their own Verizon network.
Right.
But if they connect to my ubiquitous wireless network, we can say, this is an unknown device, they're on as a guest. They're on as a guest, and their bandwidth level is way down here.
And CJ, how do we, and again, I'm sure these are questions that you consider, how do we ensure that if the signal is vigorous and strong enough, that some person isn't sitting outside on the lawn from downtown?
Drew Ward isn't using it.
Yeah. You gotta watch him.
That's really, that's a tough one. What we do have the ability to do with this system is adjust the broadcast signal on the access points.
Okay.
But we also have to be careful because we don't want the signal to degrade into the hallway.
Yeah.
You know, okay, it works great in the classroom, but as soon as you walk out that room, boom, you just lost your signal. And then, you know, if somebody sits out here in the front lawn with their laptop, when the kids want to sit out there or do something, it's tough.
It's not concerned about our kids, I'm concerned about.
Other people, sure.
They free Wi-Fi over at the high school.
Well, yeah, or, hey, pull up my car, and I sit over here, and I just get on my laptop and do whatever. No, that's something that we're going to have to play with, and we'll have to adjust and tweak each access point when it comes to those outlined areas that they don't reach that far out. You know, literally, if they're standing next to the building, or they pull up their car right next to the building, it's going to be very difficult. Yeah, it's for us to control that, but, you know, hopefully, we will have that. Although I did have a phone call last year where a person asked, how do they get on our network? And I, what do you mean? Well, I was told that because I'm a community member, that I can get free wireless.
Yeah.
Well, no, we don't have wireless right now, so.
Any other words in this?
No, I have a question. So is all the things that you want to do going to be covered under that Smart Schools?
Yes.
Because I know there's a couple of things in the capital project that's separate.
That's separate. That's separate. And actually, we built in a little bit of a buffer there, too. Ms. Mandala and I discussed this and said, let's try to spend everything that we can and buy everything that we need now, because with the state, who knows? They said that this money's there for you forever. Well, you know, we'd rather try to get it all now and get it all done rather than wait a few years. We are, we are a pilot school. I was initially contacted as a pilot to begin this. We are the first school in the OHM BOSI's area or in the Regional Information Center, the Anide BOSI's area to actually be this far. Nobody else has even begun. So I've been sharing a lot of what I've learned with everyone else, because they're asking me questions now and say, what do you need to do with, you know, with this or that? I was, we've been kind of wandering around, calling the state, and we're not getting answers from them either. So we're moving forward with this and doing it the way it's written.
Oh, and what's the timeline?
The timeline for this completion?
Yeah.
Well, as soon as we're approved, then we can begin. We've talked to the vendors. Vendor said 90-day, usually 90-day leeway as to ordering the equipment. Our biggest problem with this whole project will be the cabling, because we'll have to have contractors coming to do the cabling. We're not going to do the cabling. That's way too big of a job for us. So having the contractors come in and actually do the cabling throughout the buildings is what we're looking at. That's going to be the tough one. We don't want them here during the day. While the students are here, no way. We don't know if they can work a second shift and do it in the evening. We're not sure how that's going to work just yet.
Well, is there any hope, CJ, that it can be done over the course of the summer? I mean, if we have 90-day lead time, then aren't we pretty close to that, right now?
Yeah.
We've got approved tomorrow.
That's what I mean. That's the issue, is when this gets approved.
Yeah.
From what I understand, and I've been told pretty straightforward, do not spend a dime of this until you're approved, because they won't reimburse you for anything you buy ahead of time.
And how long does it take when they start cabling the building?
Dial a hundred?
Oh, it'll take a while for them to cable buildings, yeah.
Be nice and warm in the summer to do that.
So again, so again, between the approval from the state, which I know you don't know, and the 90 days, so are you figuring it's going to take a year, like next fall, or talking about January? I'm just trying to get a sense of what we're talking about.
Well, hopefully, what we can do is we can get part of it started. We can get the equipment in pretty quickly. That part won't be an issue as far as the computers and things like that. We can get that in and up and running as soon as we're approved, 90 days out. So let's say, we can have everything in the classrooms ready to go by Christmas or December. What we had discussed is some of the classrooms who wanted to use Chromebooks, we could temporarily put up access points if we could order them ahead of time and run the cables ourselves. It wouldn't be what we want, but it would work for now. And then, once the cabling project was finished, then we could finish everything up and connect everything. So that's what we're looking at.
And we're not looking at purchasing the Chromebooks until we get the cabling in place, because we don't want it to be a rural technology sitting around until.
Yeah, yeah. We don't want to buy, we don't want to buy the equipment before the cabling's done, because then they're just going to sit in a box until the cabling project is complete. And then we look at it, and something news come out by that time. That's the tough part. You know, like I said, technology changes, you know, on a weekly basis.
So CJ, I'm not sure, I'm not, either I didn't hear or you didn't. So let's say it got approved tomorrow. We have a 90-day lead time. How long from the time that everything is delivered in big boxes on the front lawn is it completed?
That will depend on the contractor and the cable. Exactly. That's what we're looking at.
Just the ballpark. Two years, a year, months?
I would say a year.
Then it's four years.
Yeah, I would say a year.
Oh, we have to do bids and all that stuff?
What's that?
Well, that's what the bids for contractors and all that, yeah.
We've already worked with them. We've discussed.
Yeah, there's state contract, and that's where it's at. So pretty much I've done all of that, they work.
This is fun for me, because it's my first time. I've never done anything like this, this scale, and this is.
No pressure, CJ.
Well, it did list out.
We've had architects involved as well, architects and engineers involved as well.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we're down to the weeds question. And recently, we've had some security breaches on our website there or on our internal communications network. High-tech security features. We don't have anything in the budget for that. Are we cool with everything as far as that goes?
Oh, yeah. That wasn't so much a security breach, it was a virus attack.
Okay.
It wasn't a security breach. It was a, what we call a ransomware attack.
Okay.
And we were lucky in that. Addressing that, what we've done is we've put in a new backup system. The previous backup system that we had worked well, but this virus actually knew how to attack the backup system. So what we've done is we were able to get more storage and a new backup system that we're able to do multiple backups, and it automatically distributes a backup up to Perry as well. So if anything did, like that did happen again, worst-case scenario, we'd lose like one day's worth of work.
Yeah.
And that's it. And we recovered very well from that. Today, the FBI came out and said, this will be a billion-dollar business this year. These ransomware viruses out there. You know, horrible. California just passed a law that said it's a crime to create these.
Those 12 hackers in Russia, I really concerned about.
Exactly. You know, that's exactly it, is they said, they have no jurisdiction over what Russia does.
So we, so I guess the process for it, are we to take this information, read it, and then come back?
It'll be placed on the next agenda.
It's on the next agenda? So we read it then for a discussion at that meeting?
So that'd be recommended for approval. Would you have it now and it'll be placed on the next agenda for approval?
We'll discuss it next week.
So if we have any further questions between now and then, should we be directly involved with CJ?
Directly.
Can the interim period be good?
Sure. And certainly, we'll add discussion before you go, but I'm looking at the meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I don't know if, I mean, that's the public hearing.
It's all on you, McNair.
On time, on time.
I appreciate all that you're doing, and it sounds like there's lots of layers and levels, so I was glad I could be informed and at least have an idea of what's coming along this way. Because I don't know, my master's is in instructional technology, and every day I don't know how to answer the question, how we best use that technology and keep the balance. So I appreciate the questions, and obviously, I see a lot of the benefits, and I also know that there are some serious drawbacks into making it all work. So thank you for your time, and appreciate it.
Yay, Wi-Fi.
Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you very much, CJ.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, Ms. Bedd. The comments by.
That's an appropriate form of presentation.
Well, you know, Paul, you know, it depends on where you come from. Because, because it depends on where you come from, you know. If you have no diversity whatsoever, I spent 30 years in the South, where that is a very appropriate term. So, you know, so your definition of what's appropriate is just ridiculous.
Why not?
Because of Mr. Fong.
Well, but you see, but you see, it's just a cultural thing, where I'm from or where I was for 30 years, Paul. And to mention it is ridiculous. It is. Ms. Heil, is the comments by Ms. Coombs verbatim from what she said in that meeting, or was it determined by you and her during the course of the interim and two meetings that it was revised and restated?
There were sections that I did not get, similar to the meeting where you had to match the claims and the blame, so things that I didn't get.
Right. Well, but when I did it, I sent it to all of the group for their comment at the meeting, and nobody mentioned anything. So it was, you know, it must have been verbatim of what I said. I have a problem with the obvious reconstruction of the comments. Rigorous reflection was never mentioned. Neither were I, for one, and proud of what our teachers and initiatives have achieved. This is something that is not reflective of what Ms. Coombs said in that meeting. There are components of it in there, but it is an embellishment of what actually took place and should not be part of the record.
I think it is, that's pretty close, but it's not.
Well, pretty close and good enough.
Well, I can't remember verbatim what I said, because we didn't have a prepared statement.
Well, it should be from the notes, then. If you don't remember, then it should be from the notes of Ms. Heil.
It was, I filled in like adjectives and nouns that she didn't get.
Well, adjectives and nouns, it weren't said, or should not be part of the minutes.
Well, I don't know that they weren't said.
Well, then we should go by what Ms. Heil has written.
That's what we did.
No, no, we just.
She did provide you the same courtesy then.
I know, but nobody questioned what I said. Nobody questioned it. I'm questioning what you said. And I sent it to all the board for review prior to the meeting, so that I could see that, if anybody's had a disagreement with what I filled in for Ms. Heil. But at the end of the day, nobody had a problem with it. I had a problem with the obvious attempt to indulge and to misrepresent what you said in actuality.
But that's my opinion on it.
Well, no, it's, no, it's my opinion, but it was just stated that that did occur, and that nouns and adjectives would make a big difference.
I probably filled in the necessary.
To the board members as also.
I would, I propose that the notes that Ms. Heil took during the meeting be used as an accurate reflection of what she said.
Send it to the technologies.
I think this is an accurate reflection.
You go to departments, technology.
Well, it was just discussed, and it is.
That kind of makes sense. I think the purpose of this is to give, uh, bail is to give a intent. It's frequently, that's don't, in fact, are very rarely given for work. So, I mean, as long as the intent of the statement can change. Because I don't remember what was said.
Well, again, I agree. In my recollection, is there's things in here that were not said, and that, to me, represents inaccurate, not an accurate reflection of the intent. I, for one, am proud of what our teachers, initiatives, students have achieved. That's great. I am, too, but she never said that, in my recollection.
I think Beth is the one to decide what she said and what she didn't say and what she intended.
Actually, it's the duty of the clerk.
Well, and the clerk asked me for clarification on a handful of words, which I provided, and there you have it.
I disagree with her. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Composed?
Aye.
Staying? Correspondence and communication, first of all.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Petrowski. The one who should have an addendum on the, on the, that's what, there's a high in front of you. Also, I have to do a draft on our agenda for the public hearing to be held on May 9th. I'll distribute that as well. You can let me know any changes, but that's a draft. There is a Helen and Leon Spurling Memorial Lecture coming up on Wednesday, May 4th. I believe it will be distributed community-wide, and it's to be held at 7:00 PM. Do you have some more time?
The Jewish Community Center is just going to be a service to recognize and honor Ms. Spurling. And as you know, she's came and spoke to our school for a number of years. And in fact, one of our students is going to be speaking. She's the one that received the first Helen Spurling Award at Junior High. So I just want to make sure everybody was there.
Did you live in?
She lived in, well, no, she lived in the, in the Jewish Community Center.
She lived around here, but she was always.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Her kids went to, her kids went to New Hartford.
Many presentations for our students.
Yeah, I knew she was always here, I just didn't know.
And last, US News and World came out with the rankings and announced that New Hartford was a gold medal school for 2016. I'll distribute that education as well. Congratulations to teachers, the Board of Education, students, the community, and for all the dedication to them.
Thank you. I can leave my report.
Thank you.
Court review courts, are there any? New business personnel resignation.
It is recommended that the resignation of Mary Mandl from the position of Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs be accepted effective July 1, 2016.
Discussion? All in favor?
What, what? I would just like to thank Mary for, I can't remember how many times she's been there, said her name, or whatever. And I just think that she has done a terrific job for the district in keeping us on strong financial footing. And I personally will miss her, and I think that it will be a big loss to the district. So I wish her luck, and I wish good for her and sad for us.
I second it, Ms. Hope, since us, you've done an excellent job. As the Chair of the Pledge and Findings for a number of years, and on a professional level, you've been absolutely exemplary. Very difficult, fine, but please, you know, just don't hide, CJ, if you can. And I agree, as we said, it was a tremendous loss for the district, and a loss for those of us personally. Enjoy that from there.
If we didn't rule the motion, you'd have to stay.
I'm not in favor of this actually. Thank you.
Anyone else? I agree. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a 7-0. Compliments, Occupational Education Department Chair.
It is recommended that Gary Von Nager be appointed to the position of Occupational Education Department Chair effective July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2021.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a 7-0. Substitute School Monitor, substitute teacher aide-one, substitute office specialist-one.
It is recommended that Janine Komido-Palson be appointed to substitute positions of School Monitor, Teacher Aide-One, and Office Specialist-One, effective April 20, 2016. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a 7-0. Teacher aide-one.
It is recommended that Sarah Roberts be appointed to the position of Teacher Aide-One, effective April 20, 2016. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a 7-0. Temporary School Monitor.
It is recommended that Bonnie Merlin be appointed to the position of Temporary School Monitor, effective April 20, 2016, through June 2, 2016. Move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a seven zero. Bus driver.
It is recommended that Vincent Del Nastro be appointed to the position of bus driver, effective April twentieth, two thousand sixteen.
Move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a seven zero.
It is recommended that Heather Thomas be appointed to the position of bus driver, effective April twentieth, two thousand sixteen.
Move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a seven zero. And the addendum, appointments, interim principal.
It is recommended that Richard Hunt is hereby appointed as interim principal, effective April twentieth, two thousand sixteen.
Move.
Second.
We have one with the waivers.
We're working on that with the Anide Bosse's and finally we see the termination of this education department. We'll have to be hard for the point, who is the principal and then we'll apply for a waiver and jump on the waiver that my bosses are. So I anticipate that will be approved shortly after I send you this recommendation.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a seven zero. Adoption of Bosse's budget for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approves the tentative administration budget of the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, sole supervisory district of Alina, Berka, Mermes, and counties, in the amount of three million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars for the two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen schedule.
Move. Second. Discussion?
Why is it described as tentative? What is it? I don't think that.
The actual budget throughout the year changes based on services. So the, the, the budget that you're actually voting on is this number right now after you're voting on it and changed. And, you know, just as we do transfers on our budget throughout the year. It's kind of like tentative.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a seven zero. Election of Bosse's board members.
It is recommended that the Board of Education pass its vote for the slate of candidates as presented at the April sixth, two thousand sixteen Bosse's annual meeting.
Move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a seven zero. Revision to the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school calendar.
It is recommended that the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school calendar be revised to include an elementary parent teacher preference day on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Move.
Second.
Discussion? Approved? I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a seven zero. Resolution of the votes.
It is recommended that the following be approved. The Board of Education of the New Harper Simple School District records with sorrow the passing of Coach Nurse Donna Jordan. Resolve that the Board of Education expressed its sincere sympathy to the family of Donna Jordan and that this resolution be spread upon the records of the district in a copy sent to the family.
Move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opinions? Staying? As a seven zero. Cooperative bidding resolution.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approves the district's participation in a cooperative bid with Madison and Anide Bosse's during the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year for the purchase of various types of computers and technology commodities.
Move. Second.
Discussion?
This is part and parcel of what we just saw.
So now each year we participate in this bid so that we can purchase our computer technology, our new technologies and get the Bosse's aid through, through Bosse's if we choose to go that way.
But would this be a vehicle by which we would purchase any of the equipment that we just discussed?
It could be. We can choose that way.
Thank you for allowing us to be there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a seven zero. Committee on Special Education.
The recommendations from the Committee on Special Education's meetings of March twenty-third, March twenty-ninth, March thirtieth, March thirty-first, and April first, all of two thousand sixteen, are presented for approval.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying?
Staying.
As a six zero. Five oh four committee.
The recommendations from the five oh four committees' meetings of March twenty-ninth, March thirtieth, March thirty-first, and April first, all of two thousand sixteen, are presented for approval.
Move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a six zero. Regent Lee Buppin, outgoing force to entry. Opposed executive session subject to board approval.
Recommended to board entering to executive session for the purpose of discussing current litigation and some account of square tax surcharge matter, collective negotiations with the Metropolitan Administrative Association, and to discuss matters leading to a fight more particular per sentence.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? As a seven zero. I'll go to executive session in two or three minutes.